God, thank you that we can live in a small town. I just thank you that you love us. I just pray that we do things that would glorify you and reflect our nature. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got an old agenda on here. So we actually don't have comments at the beginning. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none. Item number two, town council discussed current office staff situation at town hall. Before I let the speakers come up, I just wanted to let everyone know why I wanted to call this meeting. After our meeting Wednesday night, or Thursday night, we received another resignation letter from one of the office staff. And the next day, I called Lisa to set up an agenda instead of her trying to explain to six different people what her plans are. I wanted to know, I wanted all of us to be together to discuss what the plans were going to be for the office, knowing that they're bound to just three people talking. So that's the reason I called this meeting to order, or call for this meeting. So with that, I'll go ahead and let the public speak. Mr. Higginbotham, if you'll start us off, name and address, please.
Be right proud too. My name is Glenn Higginbotham.
Turn on the microphone, please.
I think it's on.
Okay. All right, be right proud too. My name is Glenn Higginbotham. I live at 3754 Wade Drive, Hilliard, Florida. I've been a resident of this town for over eighty-seven years. I've gone through several town clerks. The absolute best one this town has ever had in my time is Lisa Purvis. Look around this town, then you can thank Lisa Purvis for what we have. She's pushed so much. I worked with her for eighteen years, with her and for her. I've never worked with anybody any better, never worked with a nicer person, a more knowledgeable person. All I can say is, if this town dismisses her, this town is going to suffer. She's the best thing, one of the best things, if not the best thing, that has ever happened to this town. Everyone under the pressure that she is under constantly has a right, may not be correct, but they have a right to blow off steam once in a while. If it isn't a continuous thing, that should be forgiven. Look at what she's done and go from there, please.
All right. Ms. Alex.
Alex Purvis, 271 Purvis Lane, Hilliard, Florida, 32046. For those that do not know me, I'm Alex, Lisa's daughter. I'm not about to stand before you and defend what she did or tell you it was professional or even right. I may, however, get emotional, and that I apologize for. I am my mother's daughter, and we wear our emotions on our sleeves, and that shouldn't be mocked. Because I know that what you saw Thursday night was thirty minutes of a person showing every emotion they felt. Mocking someone is what should make someone question their morals for having emotion. For nearly thirty years, I've never inserted myself in town business. I've never came to one of these meetings. She didn't ask me to do this. She didn't, and she'd love it if I was at home right now. But after Thursday night, I felt compelled to speak out about the hypocrisy that took place here Thursday night. They stood before you and spoke on a hostile, toxic work environment, but stood before you publicly degrading and humiliating your town clerk in a public platform. That's hypocrisy, and that is unprofessional. They did it with an audience that applauded at the end. They applauded. That's unprofessional. People don't know that what they're doing is a problem unless they're given the professional courtesy to be told what they're doing is a problem. People can't fix what they're doing if they don't know it's a problem. Everybody vents, everybody. My boss vents. My boss has told me all kinds of things that shouldn't be said, but it gets said, and it happens. It's called common decency to go to someone and express what they're doing is wrong so that they can fix it. They stood before you and openly admitted to doing the exact same thing, talking about people behind one's backs. They openly said that. They said, "We saw her face at the parade. We knew we were in for it." They said, "Ooh, I'd been warned about Kim come October." Talking behind one's back is talking behind one's back. There's no worse or better. It's tit for tat. We're not in preschool. You're an adult. It is your responsibility to voice how you feel. It's no one else's responsibility to voice it. It just isn't. It's yours. No one was scared, saying you're scared after the fact, after you openly participated in the conversations, which, again, was admitted Thursday night, is a cop-out. Lisa has no power. She can't retaliate. She can't fire someone. Only you all can vote to fire someone. That's a fact. Y'all heard one side of a story. You heard a narrative. You heard a half-truth. I'm her daughter. I sit at home every single night with her and talk about our day. She loves these women, loves them, tells me every day how wonderful they are, how kind they are, how smart, how helpful, everything there is to do about it. Sends me out of my way countless times to go get this, go get that, a birthday cake, a gift card, because she wants them to feel important. I know that timer's almost up, so if you're going to cut me off at three minutes, my sister's going to finish it, so are you going to cut me off? She was given thirty minutes Thursday night. Are you going to cut me off? Because I'm almost done. I just want to speak on the comment about a rat. I do want to speak on that. Can I speak on that?
Oh, I'll give you one more minute.
Okay. I made that comment. Whichever one of you is LeAnn, I'm very, very sorry. I made that comment. I'm who put it in her head. She came home, and she was paranoid. She was. There was things going on behind her back, and there was talking, and even then, she wasn't believing what she was thinking. I'm who used the word rat, and for that, I am truly sorry, because I don't know LeAnn. She loves LeAnn. She has told me from day one that LeAnn brings so much knowledge to this town and is so helpful and kicks in whenever she can to help. I've been the town clerk's daughter for thirty years. I'm thirty-five years old. That's my life. And I've never been not proud to say who my mother is, because I've constantly been asked in the public, "Any relation to Lisa Purvis, the town clerk?" I've always proudly said yes, and I've always been welcomed with the most warmest, kindest responses. No one before me can sit here and honestly say that they have every coworker they've ever worked with, and they've not said a bad thing about them. No one can say that. I know I certainly can't. She's a great person. She loves this town. She has sacrificed our entire family for this town. No one can speak on that better than me. I'm her daughter. She has endured countless phone calls and texts over the years begging her to come home and be a mother, and her response has never faltered. The job has to get done, and I'm the person who has to do it. And my family has respected that for thirty years, because it means the world to her, this town. Her health has been sacrificed for this town. You all can see it. She didn't start out like that. Sitting behind a desk for thirty years is what caused that. So I just want you all to know that what you heard the other night is one narrative. You talked to past employees who there admittedly were a problem with. I sat with her while she called all the other past employees, glowing recommendations who even have provided her with letters tonight to present to you all. She's a great person, and I'm not saying that because she's my mother. I'm saying that because she is my best friend in my whole world. You all know that. I live with her. I'm thirty-five years old, and I have no plans to not live with my mother, because I love her. And she is a wonderful person, and I needed to come up here and say that to you all, because for thirty years, I've seen what she does for this town, and you all need to see it. Thank you.
All right, Ally Hartman.
I was playing. If you have my three minutes, you're listening.
Okay. Ms. Ursula. Name and address, please.
Twenty, Ursula Jones, 27207 Pond Drive, Hilliard, Florida. I have known Lisa from the time she was working part-time at the old town hall. And she always was running around, and she always was busy. And I said to myself, "Who is this young woman? She is really working." And then I watched her grow, and she became the town clerk. And when we would get together, she would talk about the improvements and how proud she is, how the town developed. And she knows that the council is the top guy in the ladder, and she comes underneath. And so, when the employees come, they should come to her and have a meeting and discuss the trouble. No, they go to the council. Well, you know, I don't believe in that. And I also believe people should leave work. They should be home, come to work, do their job, and go back home and collect their paycheck and their trouble leave behind. But no, there is always trouble in town hall. No, that's not right. They should just be working and not gossiping all the time. But anyway, I watched the town from a trailer park town develop into a beautiful little town, and I thoroughly enjoy the park. And who developed, who had the idea? Lisa Purvis. But that is not the only idea she had. She had lots and lots of ideas. And I just love her deal with everyone as a human being, as a friend, for everything she is. Okay, that's all, folks.
Hi, Ms. Mary Lou, come on. You're a little late, but okay.
I didn't rule it out, but I thought I'd just play it to you. I'm going to ask for another wait. And I found it's awfully hard, because I never seen anything like what's going on there. I served on the council, and everybody was getting along. And everything that happened said is the truth. And I know there has been times I needed things after I was off the council. And I would call and ask Lisa, "Who should I see about?" And I kept hearing that she didn't like LeAnn. And she used to tell me to come up here the one time that LeAnn would be here, because she could surely help me. That's the way she would always say. And then, if I got here, I did, and then when I did get here lately, I saw LeAnn. But as far as the time she's helped, not only if she thinks she can help you, even though you came up to the town, and if she thought she could help you in any other way, she would. Because I know I had an issue, and this was after hours, so she was privileged to do Lisa help, went with me, because the people that I needed, I needed a notary. And she had went with me all the way to Jacksonville, Florida, to be my notary. And so, things that she do and talk about and how much she was going on and all these grants, all the things that's taking place, you just look around and you'll see it. Everybody working, the town of Hilliard is on the job as far as what you see, builders and repairing and all that. In my understanding, because I do, I don't come to the meeting. I have issues, medicine, I take that supposed to cause me not to be in a crowd, and I try to stay away as much as possible. But if I hadn't have come today, I would have left there probably the rest of my life, because I just think that. If there's two, as the people say, there's two sides to every story. And a person will talk only so long about themselves. If nobody says anything about it, somebody don't hush, because they don't know whether I can talk to you or not. And so, so when you hear these things, please take into consideration that it has to be two sides to this story. And I don't think you're going to find a person. It probably would take, I heard the other night, two. I heard the other night that Lisa was asking about her two years left in order for her to retire. I think it probably would take that long for somebody to get up to date on the stuff that she might have done. I really think it would take that long, because when I was up here, grants wasn't good. It wasn't something easy to do. And if you got all of these for the town, that the town is growing like it is, please consider whatever you think. Please consider that she is the best thing. I was here, I was not on the double bound with another town clerk. But I think you got the best thing.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Lou. I don't think anyone up here disputes the contribution that Lisa has done for this town. Nobody disputes that whatsoever. She's helped me a lot. I'm not going to lie. And I'm sure that she's helped everybody else. She's done a lot of good for this town, and I'll limit it to that. But the main reason we're here is, we need to find out how the office is going to function with the limited staff that's out here. Get going.
When you called on Friday, I immediately had a plan. I had reached out to Jennifer to make sure that she was good and she was going to come back on Monday, and she let me know she was. Then I reached out to our retired staff member, Ms. Myra Coggraham, and asked her, "Would she consider a six-month or less temporary position?" I also have three qualified applications on my desk that I was planning to reach out to and bring them in to see if they fit everything that the paper said that they did, if I didn't know them. Some I do, some I don't. And I was going to see about fast-tracking them and getting them in the office. And I feel certain that if I'm able to do that, then we will be fine. Yes, it's a lot of work, but it was a lot of work the last time something similar to this happened. I do know that you all, I don't know how to really put this. I don't know that anybody realizes as much as I realize, and I don't think that a person can realize this unless they work beside a person, but Kimberly Corbett is my right-hand person. I handle half of the office, and she handles the other half. And again, there was some nice things said at the workshops that we had when we discussed what my plan was about moving people around once I had an employee that did resign prior to. And it was disheartening to hear that you all didn't agree with what I was trying to say about wanting to make her that person. And maybe an office manager wasn't the right title. Maybe I should have used deputy clerk. But because she didn't do that type of work, and I think that the future of this town needs to be up to you all as to who moves up or how we go about structuring. All I can do is say that she knows how to do three complete jobs in this office, whereas I know the other three. And I just would hope that you all would realize that when I recommend somebody for something and I talk positive about them, that I truly mean it. I mean, and just like what my daughter got up and said, I do love all the people that work in this office. And it broke my heart to hear the things that were said about Kim and myself. I feel like that a lot of the things were taken totally out of context. When a person's beat down in the workplace, I know from sitting here, I have listened to you all talk to me over the years in a manner that has hurt me to no end. And so, yes, I vent it, as unprofessional as it was, as I vent it. Just like Kim felt so degraded at those workshops. So, yeah, it's hard not to show emotion. We are women, and I know that we are more emotional than most men, but we do. And I just, I want to read some things that I wrote down. Because I do, I want to fully acknowledge that I was unprofessional in my venting and referencing other by name among staff members. That behavior was inappropriate, and I take full responsibility for it. That said, I also believe that professionalism includes open communication. I was never made aware that my actions or words were causing discomfort or concern, and I truly believe that I should have been given the opportunity to correct the issue before it escalated. Simply put, I cannot fix a problem I do not know exists. I will own everything that I said, and I am willing to be held accountable for my words. However, I will not take responsibility for action or statements that I did not make. I've sat through several public workshops where similar venting or bantering has occurred. Many of us have. We often feel we're in a safe space and can speak candidly. That doesn't make it right, and I'm not offering this as an excuse. But it is a reality of how these environments sometimes feel. Moving forward, I've created a document. It's a draft document, but it's titled Resolution and Future Goals, Plans of Action, that outlines steps, I believe, can move our town forward in a more professional and productive manner. I want to be clear. What happened at the last meeting and the way it unfolded in the public forum was damaging to the image of the town. It shouldn't be something anyone feels proud of or applauds. Once again, I fully admit I let my emotions get the best of me, and I behaved unprofessionally. But had someone, anyone, approached me earlier to say, "This is how your behavior is making me feel," I would have absolutely addressed it and found a better way to manage my emotions. I've also come to understand that I need to be more direct in communication with staff while still remaining professional, so moving forward, that's exactly what I intend to do. At the last meeting, I was stated that everyone felt the way that was expressed in response. I've checked out to several former employees, some of whom were here tonight, and may or may not choose to speak, which I didn't know you were going to do speaking first, others who have provided letters. And I would just like to read two of them. Danielle Minshew, my very first deputy clerk and the fourth person, or the person hired to make the office a four-person staff. In 2008, Lisa Purvis and the town of Hilliard took a chance on me and hired me for the deputy town clerk position. I was a young, newlywed and being offered a job right here at home was a true blessing. I worked full-time for the town for three years, and in my fourth year, I went to a part-time position, which allowed me to be more present, a more present mom to our growing family, and still continue to work for the town hall, but with less hours. I'm so sorry, my vision's so bad. During those years with the town of Hilliard, I worked directly under Ms. Purvis and learned countless skills that would continue to follow me in life, no matter the task. Lisa Purvis's work ethics and goals were always to better and to benefit the town of Hilliard. I remember attending conferences with her and watching her shine in her position. People sought her out at those conferences to ask questions or to get her opinion on the things town clerks related. I'm so sorry. She knew her stuff. In my time at town hall, I was treated like family. When I became pregnant with my second child, my heart knew its calling, and that was to be a stay-at-home mom. I still remember the baby shower, last-day worked luncheon. Lisa, staff, and members of the town council gave me and the public's chicken wings. We all ate. I felt the town hall on my last day with gifts. I left the town hall on my last day with gifts for the new baby, hugs and well wishes, and sweet goodbyes. It's so hard to believe it was nearly seventeen years ago when I first walked in those town hall doors. I know a lot has changed since then, but I can only speak on my experience. I will forever be grateful for the opportunity that Lisa and the town of Hilliard presented me. And then I have a shorter email from Ms. Sharon Blanton. I was so happy to work at the town hall with you. You always made us feel like family. One of the sweet memories I have is having a monthly luncheon as a teen. You were always supportive to us. You have always been, put endless time and support into our town. I did reach out to Erin, who was in disbelief at what all happened at the last meeting. She was going to try to be here tonight. Unfortunately, I don't think she did make it. I also, Myra, she's here. I know that she might not want to speak, but I do know she's here. I want to read just one thing from Ms. Burnett's exit interview that was taken on her very last day of working for the town of Hilliard on the 19th of September. I said to her, as one of the questions, "How would you describe the morals of employees?" She advised, "Lately stressful. I asked if I overshared. Feels we all do. Feels that mindset role. Goals are constantly changing within the council." As far as the, she was referencing to the salary study and then how long it took to make a decision on the public works directors. But never once did she say the things you're saying in front of me offend me. And I would have thought if there were, that would have been the opportunity if something was offensive. I also reached out to Elise prior to her resignation, and she also advised me in a text message that she had no issues, that she didn't feel like that, she felt it might have been stressful more for the front office, but didn't have no issues and loved Kim to death. And I could read it, but that is the gist of it, and that is what she said. So I'm open. Like I said, I got three qualified applications. I've got Myra sitting out here. I've got Myra sitting out here. And that is my plan. I do not plan to or want to lose the two employees that are left, especially, nothing negative to Jennifer, I don't want to lose you either. You've been here six months. Kim's been here 11 years and knows three complete jobs that I do not know. And I want to make that clear.
You have something you wanted to?
Okay. Regardless of how, whatever happens going forward from tonight, I do think that we need to have some sort of way, regardless of what department it is, that if, if an employee has a problem with their boss, they're not talking to their boss about the problem. I think that employees needed to at least go to another director and have that conversation. I don't know how the council feels, but I think that's, that's one way, because it's hard when you're the, you're someone's boss and you're the HR director, and you have someone that has a complaint on you. It's hard to, it's hard to take yourself out of that. So I think going forward, we need to have some way that employees can reach out to another department head. We addressed that two years ago, and what we made a decision is that we would have a deputy clerk, and that they would go to the deputy clerk if they had a problem with the clerk, because everybody else had somebody. But since then, Lisa's chosen not to have a deputy clerk. So that's, that's the problem with, they had nobody to go to because there wasn't a deputy clerk. So I just, that's just for the record, but that was, and that's because Lisa chose not to have a deputy clerk. All right, does anybody have any?
I would like to say something. Yes, I did, I did choose not to at the time, but that does not mean that I'm not willing to at this time.
But if we'd had that spot in place, we might not be here today. I mean, that's one of the notes that I made, and it goes back to, there are times you've been made aware of, of issues and problems that have not always been resolved. You know, I'm one of your biggest advocates when it comes down to getting out of the office. I told you since day one, do your 40 hours at home. We understand that you're a dedicated person to the town, but when it comes to time, where help is more of a, of a bigger issue to worry about. You know, without our help, the job means nothing, you know? And I'm a huge proponent of, but we got here today because steps were in place. We got there because there has been insufficiency. We've gotten there because inappropriate things have been said. We've gotten here today not just because of one thing. There's no disputing. You can never dispute the fact that what you've done for this town has been phenomenal. I mean, there's no other way that we can look at that. You know? But we can't continue to keep trudging along the same track we always have, or continue to be where we've always been. That's, that's where the issue arises, is what, at what point do we shift the gear? We do know that 30 years is actually the end of November, correct?
Not in my, my position.
But in your employment, as far as it is, the end of the month, at the end of November, correct?
That is 30 years, but I'm not eligible until the end of January.
January, the next? So, you know, you will have your 30 years. That was one of the biggest things you told me when I first got elected, was you wanted your 30 years.
I didn't know then that they would go back and retro my part-time employment, which was November of 95.
So you have your 30 years, Ms. Purvis. We talk about health. We talk about, I don't think you really understand how much I care about you personally.
No, I don't. I do not.
I've told you a hundred times, I've told you a hundred times, do your 40 hours and go home.
I feel like you say that, but at the same time, if I tell you I need help-
We've hired your staff.
And I'm drowning.
We've hired your staff.
You've hired one staff member after two and a half years of me requesting it. I feel like I am giving you excuses, and they're not acceptable when things cannot be done. And I was on a track to make a change with the two employees that I hired two years ago. I was training all of them to do one part of my job and the other to do the other part of my job.
But still, twice in six years, we've basically started back from scratch.
I can't make people stay.
But when, when issues are brought to you, and I go back to, staff should have had the deputy clerk. Mr. Pickett, Councilman Pickett, was on you for a long time about that, and you chose not to do it.
Maybe that's my fault after what happened.
Maybe, or it is your fault. I mean, that's part of the two, there's got to be ownership. We talked about ownership.
Most deputy clerks, they're not an office manager or supervisor to the other staff, and they do what the clerk does. My intent was to move the person that was doing the clerk duties to that position, but not as overseeing other staff members. They had only been here two years. They were very good at what they did, did not want the responsibility of supervision of other employees. And that was my plan. And unfortunately, that plan is now ended with their resignation.
But you also made the comments to us in the financial workshops that you wanted Ms. Corbett to get a big pay raise, no matter what position you put her in or what you called it, you'd move her to whatever position that was. So I mean, are you putting the right person in the right positions, or is this strictly to give more money to one employee?
I wanted to put her in my second in charge, not necessarily what the title of deputy clerk, because those are not the duties she would have been doing. Deputy clerks do agendas, minutes, legal advertisements, records, things of those natures, public. Checkers request, sorry.
Right, right. And also, an exit interview to the person that you've worked for, I think is very, very difficult. I don't feel like people can always feel like, especially if there is an issue, because you have to worry, if you go out and get another job, what kind of recommendation are you going to get?
We don't give recommendations. All we can say is if they're eligible for rehire or not.
And I go back to, if somebody said something, maybe it really spoke their mind, would it affect that?
It would not have. It would have helped. It would have helped this problem.
But we go back to the small things like I talked about, where you don't put the camera in your office like we asked.
No, I don't. Do you know why? Because I am a director, and when people come in my office, there should be a certain sense of privacy when I'm talking with an employee that I'm supervising.
So even when you were asked by the council to do it, you still chose not to?
I think that you all said, "Put it in there for my safety."
That's what Ms. Raisler said, she was one that even-
I no longer stay late like I did then. So I didn't feel there was no longer a safety issue.
So you made a decision that the council thought needed to be done?
If you want a camera in my office, then we'll put a camera in my office.
That's what I'm saying, it was already established. You chose not to do what you were asked to do.
Okay. I, I did not take authority and do what I was told to do.
Three months ago, out of your mouth, you had the best staff that you've ever had in this office. How did we get here? How did we get here in three months, from the best staff that you ever had, till every one of your staff is leaving besides you and Kim?
I don't know, maybe you all can tell me. You all know more about the problem than I do. I mean, I just, I can't fix what I don't know is happening, and when it happened, it happened all at one time. Literally, all at one time.
Now that you know, what do we fix moving forward?
I no longer vent in front of anybody.
Because you're going to hire new people, and it can't be a repeat of what we've had in the last few weeks.
But, and, I'm just going to say this, and I read it-
I'm not trying to be, I'm just saying.
I know that, but I think that we all have established that we've done it. I mean, I've sat through workshops when it's happened. And we all felt we were comfortable in a safe place, and we could say whatever we felt. But at the same time, until you know that you're not, it's hard to say, "Oh, no, I can't do that." But since this has come to light, you're exactly right. It is very unprofessional, and I will never, in whatever career time I have left with the town, will I ever say anything negative to anyone. I just would hope that if people come to you all, our policy does say, and I know what you're saying, Kenny, but in our policy, it does say that you go to your director. If that don't work, you go to the town clerk. If that don't work, you go to the council president. Used to be mayor until that got changed, but now it's council president. And then that council president deals with it. We don't bring it to a public meeting for the very first time for the world to see and to make our town look like this. I'm so ashamed of what happened the other night, and I'm so ashamed for whatever role I played in making all that happen.
Well, the thing is, Lisa, I can't call Kenny, I can't call Dallas, I can't call Jared, I can't, but whenever we need to talk about this, it's in a public setting. And that's just the facts of reality. It's in a public, well, workshops are public. Anybody from the public is allowed to come to them.
They're just not.
They're not attended all the time, but still.
They're, they're not. You have to be there to know what happens.
But regardless, that is, it's in a public forum.
It's not put out there for the world to see, John, I disagree. I mean, I, I don't know how well you all know me from day one. I don't care if it's wrong or right. This town's always number one, and we do not ever put negativity like what happened the other night out on the town at whatever cost. And again, I apologize immensely for what role I played and what happened.
Well, we have had, had those kind of conversations before. Whenever we had other directors that were let go, those kind of conversations were to us.
And it looked horrible then.
So you can't say that this is the first time we've ever done it. We've had these type of discussions at least five times in a row.
For the record, I didn't know there was an issue till the 23rd when we had the workshop. I guess for me, I, I try to wrap my head around how you work with your staff 40 hours a week and not notice that there's issues.
I can tell you that as extremely busy as I am right now, because this is, this, believe it or not, I have more grants going on right now than I've ever had in my entire career, and they are major grants, as you know, with the hurricane slash community center. And so unless I've got to go to the bathroom or run to the kitchen to grab something out of the refrigerator and ride back to my office, you have to come see me if you want to talk. And everybody has been doing that nonstop. I haven't had no issues that I knew of.
Well, and it's not like that you're up there in your office and all the ladies are back here in the chambers, what you don't hear. They're right outside your office, and-
I don't hear them. If I did, and I heard something that needed to be addressed, I would have come out. I mean, but, again, I'm telling you all, I can't fix what I don't know is, needs to be fixed. And had I known any of whatever was going on, needed to be fixed, I would have fixed And it's, I mean, it's just, for everything to have been so great up until it wasn't, it was mind-boggling to me that the things that were said were really a problem. I mean, I, I did not see none of it.
Even going back to your inappropriate comments that you said you took, should there be some form of disciplinary action that takes place for the comments that made that were inappropriate?
Again, I think we've all said inappropriate comments about staff members publicly.
Has anybody ever gotten in trouble for them?
I don't know how you would get in trouble for them.
So it's a reoccurring problem? It's just allowed to fester and go on? I mean, is that what we're saying?
No, I think we're talking about two different things.
Well, you took on to have inappropriate comments that were made?
Yes, and I will not make them again.
But you say it happens all the time on a regular basis?
No. I think that's where the misunderstanding was. I have been in workshops where I've heard inappropriate things said. Like, again, like I said, everybody thought they were in a safe space, just like I do in my office. And I feel like that I have learned a lesson, and it will not happen again moving forward. But to reprimand me when we're all guilty of it, that would be-
But you keep saying all, who was all?
Do you really want me to say? How about Jody Wiles? How about the things that were said about him in an open workshop?
And he was not considered for, for promotion for, because of those comments, in my opinion.
I think we all know what I'm talking about.
But you are the chief administrative officer, I mean, you could have gone to his supervisor and discussed it.
I didn't agree with it.
You went to his supervisor?
No, I didn't agree with the comments that were made.
Right, so I mean, as, as the leader of this town, you could have chosen to have gone to his supervisor.
And what would they have done?
That would have been up to you too. You could have said, "Hey, here's what happened, here's what's going on. I believe it deserves some form of reprimand."
How do they reprimand council members?
Ethics complaint?
I don't, I don't think that was appropriate, because I felt like, that you all felt like you were in a safe space, just like I did. And that's the only thing I'm trying to make reference to. I just think we're all guilty of the same thing, and moving forward, I think we all learned a big lesson. I know I have, we'll not have it again.
So what kind of checks and balances would you put in place to ensure this doesn't- So what types of checks and balances are you ready to put in place to assure as much as possible that we don't wind up here again?
Well, I did work all weekend, and I did come up with a plan, and I put it into the little system that makes stuff look much more professional than I can make it look, and spit out a draft resolution and future goals plan of action. And I would like the opportunity to go over it with you all. It's a little bit on everybody's behalf to make it work, and things can be changed. Like I said, it's a draft. It was just my ideas put on paper and then put in this format. I've talked to the town attorney about it, I shared it with him, he reviewed it. I think it's just something that I, I feel like would be beneficial and would put those checks and balances.
Can I see that? Do you have copies, enough copies for everybody, or this is only on the copy?
No, I did not make copies because it's a draft and I don't feel appropriate to. I felt like it would be better, better utilized at the workshop Thursday night, because at that time is when I had prior told you all that I wanted to further discuss the succession And that's when I was going to roll it out. Christian might have something he'd like for me to say about it.
I don't have anything I want to say, but I have reviewed it and I appreciate you sharing it. I mean, I think I generally thought it was good, you know? I had some quibbles, you know? I liked the idea of the deputy town clerk as well. I worry about if you're absent, who can sign things, who has authority on behalf of the town, that kind of thing. I think that was my only note.
And I know a lot of people said that about signing things, but we have four check signers in the town and it only takes two and we have four agreement signers.
It's a charter issue, though. You're the chief administrative officer, so there's things even beyond checks. You attest things, things like that, so that's all.
So still, moving forward, if somebody had a complaint with you, what would be the process? Because you still say they'll go to the clerk, they'll go to HR and that's both still you and then come to the council president or whatever. How are they gonna come to you about a problem with you and then move on to somebody else?
They would skip over me and go directly to you. If they didn't feel comfortable speaking with me. It was the mayor, like I said, for many years and that was changed back.
I'll tell you the issue I have with that. There is no authority. You have no authority. I mean, that's the issue. So, I mean, you all can determine whatever that procedure is. I mean, you can, tonight, whenever, I mean, I don't think it's good enough to just go to the town council president. I liked the idea of the deputy town clerk because at least they can, they may have some training as a result of working in town hall, working in HR. And, you know, the nature of how that investigation works, I, you know, we'd have to talk about that. But it could be another department. I mean, you have options. I don't think going to someone on the council is helpful.
Me neither.
Because you can't talk.
Because you would have to have a workshop about it and/or a public meeting to talk about it.
That's right. And, you know, and it works differently in other departments. If someone has a problem with another department head, they actually could go to the town clerk. She's the chief administrative officer. So this is the only department where it doesn't quite work out that way.
And again, with the open positions, that could definitely be and will be definitely something that I would look for. I also think that Dallas has brought up something and that would also resolve the issue in a few years.
Town manager.
It's true.
That won't stop us from being where we're at right now, again.
Another department head, let me hire a deputy clerk.
Did you say let me hire a deputy clerk?
That's what I said.
And we've already talked to you.
Am I gonna be here is the question at this point.
I kind of, all these people are here like they came to see you get terminated or something or about to speak. Nobody said that. I mean, this is so misleading to me up here because I miss that meeting.
I point-blank asked John when he said this public meeting, am I gonna be fired or is Kim gonna be fired tonight?
My answer was.
We'll talk about it Monday night.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that was not enough for me to not know. I mean, I'm sorry, but I have been made to feel over the last several years pretty bad sitting in this seat and pretty talked-down-to, disrespected, made to feel like all I do is give excuses when in actuality, I just can't get the work done because there's more work than I can human possibly do or push out to other people. And so I was not taking that to it.
Why you're saying that, because I don't think anybody here has ever slighted the job that you've done as town clerk. So not one person. So if you've ever felt that way, that's something that you're just feeling because not one person here has ever slighted you as town clerk. I've even said it on more than one occasion, that you're phenomenal at your job. But you need to let go of things around you a lot of times and delegate that to other people rather than try to hold on to every little aspect of what's going on inside that office. You have to delegate that some instead of taking ownership of everything. And everything that happens is not against you. If somebody's getting accolades for something else that's going on, that's not, that's not something that's against you, that's just something that somebody else is doing. You as town clerk are a phenomenal town clerk. So, so don't, I don't know why you would feel slighted as town clerk because I've sat here and I don't think anybody's ever said that, not one person.
No, I agree. I've heard that and I've said that on repeat. It's not about the work I do, it's about the oversight of staff that I have felt that way about. Felt that way the two workshops, the eighth and the 11th. Felt that way last October in the workshop. I mean, I feel like.
Last October, you got everything that you asked for. I think.
There were things said last October that were very hurtful to me. I'm telling you how I feel and you're allowing me to do that, so I'm trying to do that.
Well, I know that, excuse me, I've been on the council for 25 years and whenever I started, you had, it was you and two other employees. And I know now that, I mean, you've kept saying that you need more people, need more people and we've got up to six people in this office with you included. And right now, we're down to three. We're back to three.
And I know that that sounds like we've doubled our staff, but understand, we've doubled our workload and then some. It is a fact.
I do like some of that in there that you wrote and some of it we would have to do.
It's a draft.
Yeah.
Did you not feel like that we do have doubled the work?
Oh, I didn't have nothing to do with that.
I just, I want to make sure.
How long would it take to transfer in or transition in a new clerk?
Say it one more time.
How long would it take to transition in a new clerk?
I have no idea. It all depends on the person. And I didn't know the direction that was gonna be proposed at the last meeting until it was proposed. I didn't know that was coming. I was looking at another direction in my succession plan.
Well, I mean, that's not guaranteed. Yeah, that has to go between, for the voters, I mean, that's not a guarantee.
But I was looking at the other side of that, what it does allow right now. And I've come to terms with I'm not the future of the town of Hilliard. I am definitely the past and I want the future to be beautiful and bright. And that has been a very hard thing to accept, but I have accepted it.
So that's what brings me to here. We know you have your 30 years in January. At any time, you can walk after that. I mean, you can decide one day that you just want to be on. I mean, at what point do we bring somebody in that we start transitioning and start learning the job? I mean, it's two years, adequate amount of time.
That's what I thought we were doing with the staff that we had and that's why this is so hard for me because now we're here back starting over again.
But that's a problem.
And I was looking at that.
That's the problem, Kenny, is that we're going to start back, but the person that has the knowledge almost needs somebody independently to start learning that knowledge. We don't have the adequate amount of time.
I can tell you right now, you just said I can walk at any time. My picture in my home life is between September and December of '27.
I know, but a lot of things change. I mean, if you won the lottery tonight, there's nobody to fill your shoes.
Jared, if I won the lottery tonight, as much as I love this town, I'd make sure somebody knew what needed to be known before I leave here.
Well, I hope you come to my office instead of going all the way to Tallahassee.
Just saying. I mean.
I understand, I'm just trying to.
I want somebody, I, I mean, I have two years I've spent doing that.
30 years of knowledge into some timeframe.
There's people, I mean, they're not gonna know it. I mean, they're not gonna know the history, just like we don't know Myra's history, you know? I mean, we got asked a question today and me and Kim just looked at each other and said, Myra would know that, we've lost our historian. I mean, you're not gonna get that no matter what because there's nobody left that's been here that long. Everybody's retiring. And my goal was to train up, to have a financial person and then somebody doing the clerk side of the work.
And that was all happening. And that's, I guess, my hardest part for me is that was happening and three months ago, we were there. Now we don't even know why we're here three months later. There's you and one other manager in there and neither one of you know how we got here. And that's what, I guess, really bothers me the most is how are we not gonna be there again?
Kenny, I can't predict the future, but if I didn't know that was coming, I would have tried. I mean, the one person that left, there was nothing I could do. I understood why they were leaving. I understood what I was told, why they were leaving. The other one, totally, I mean, up until she walked out of the door that day, I had no idea.
So just to clarify, Lisa, you had no inclination at all that anybody was unhappy and lonely?
No, I did not know there was a problem between Kendra and Kim until approximately one hour prior to her departure. I knew Kim was upset over what had happened at the workshops as I would have been upset too. And she was wearing it on her sleeve and it was taken personal by everybody around her. And I hate that for them and I hate that for her. But I didn't, I didn't know there was a problem until there was a problem.
But we do, this is bigger than Kendra and Kim.
Well, yes, we do now.
I was gonna say, that's all you just acknowledged.
I definitely didn't know that until the second. Like my children attested, I loved everybody in here and I so liked the two that were working under me for the last two years. To the point where, just like she said, anything I could do to make them feel uplifted or better, I was having her going and doing. And I thought, I thought the opposite of what the reality was. And it was very hurtful. I wished I'd have known, I wished I'd have known and could have done something to have done differently. Or stopped doing whatever it was, you know, the banter or the venting. Moving forward, though, like I said, I can put out more advertisements, but after the other night, I was pretty much at a standstill. In addition to Friday being extremely busy and today being extremely busy, I did not make any moves forward and did not want to until I had some direction as to where I was going.
Are you gonna advertise from the deputy clerk position?
If you all will allow me to, yes, I will.
I would prefer to see somebody from outside our agency. I think that person should act as the person that maybe is our HR and it does act as the supervisor of the office. And that way it should free up some of your time. I know we're going to discuss this at a workshop on Thursday night, but I think we really do need to consider at what point we do look at bringing in somebody to transition into.
Would that not be who I would hire as a deputy?
It may or may not be.
What do you mean by that?
Because, I mean, just because it's who you think may be the right person, the council may have a different opinion of what they want to do. I mean, if it lasts two years down the road and the citizens do agree that they want town managers, then it doesn't matter anymore. But if it's not the right clerk, not the right fit, I feel like that we should have the opportunities to counsel, to interview somebody and bring them in. And if we do it sooner than later, it gives you the opportunity even to look at, say, hey, this person's not everyone to get this. And so we're not down to the wire and we're not constantly turning over interior staff. And that would give you an extra staff member potentially.
Even with the manager, you'd still have to have some sort of clerk, right?
Well, you'd have the deputy.
So that's what I'm saying, so that deputy clerk would necessarily still be there.
I need to understand what you're saying because what you just said.
I feel like that even if we have everybody in the office learning, we get a deputy clerk who runs the office and starts handling the staff there, we're not everyone fully be able to eclipse what you have. I think somebody almost one-on-one working with you to make your contacts, to meet the people, to be on their, you know, if we have a grant that runs past a point that you want to try to get to, we need to have somebody who knows that, not just like, oh, hey, you're now the new town manager, new town clerk, congratulations. And they have no clue, but somebody who's there with you, who goes out and meets and does the delegations and does everything with you.
There's three positions in the office that are open right now. Are you saying in addition to those three?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Because without saying that, they will have such a full workload that it'll be difficult to have them do what you're saying.
And that's what I'm saying, I mean, I'm asking the council. I mean, is this a point that we begin to look at trying to find somebody to bring in?
Can we discuss that more Thursday night? And the reason why is because as part of the succession.
We know that transition's coming up, but I think it's something that we're gonna have to work at. At what point do we pull that trigger? There's gotta be an overlap. And like I said, once my hands 30 years, we can all hope they stay the full 30 years, you know, or 32 years, but there's no guarantees.
33 for the future. And I told you all with some meeting back that I did have a succession plan and that is, if it's okay with you all, gonna be on the workshop and along with this resolution of future goals and plans. And at that time, if that's what's discussed and wanted, we can put it on the next agenda and I can move from there. But in the meantime, can I go ahead and bring in the applicants that I have and start interviewing?
I don't have a problem with it, but one of them will be a deputy clerk. I wish that sounded right.
He can be a deputy clerk.
Okay, the three are not, and so I would have to advertise. I was gonna advertise for that, but the three that I have right now.
The deputy clerk won't be an additional position to the total six, it'll be one of them.
Okay, that's what I was asking you.
No, he was saying on top of that, it would be hiring a clerk to take your spot and for you to start training. So that would be a separate person until you leave.
No, I understand that, but the deputy usually would be the one that I'm training to take over as clerk. That's normally how that works unless you go outside whenever the position's open. I'm just telling you what happens throughout the state of Florida. I've been going to those classes for 20 years and that's how they do it. The deputy clerk serves suited. The deputy clerk, if they're suited for the job, then they normally are the ones that step into it. They have to go through the process, but they are given the opportunity. Um, and then if that isn't the direction that anybody wants to go or they want to go, then that's when they go outside.
I think Jared would say, and Councilwoman would say, that the council would like to have some input on who that person is that would take your spot.
No, no, no.
And it wouldn't be one of the, somebody you just advertise and hire by yourself. I think it was.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but I need people right, I need bodies right now to do work.
So the deputy clerk would do a lot of what Elise had been doing, right?
Not all though. Like sheeted accounts payable too, that's more of a financial task.
Well, speaking of staff, have you had a discussion with your staff on the issues that were raised?
My two staff members that are left, yes, I have. I'd said that.
You may have missed it, but yeah.
No, I said it.
Okay. So do we have any more discussion?
Are we going to get a copy of that before Thursday night or are you thinking about Thursday night?
I'm gonna try my best. I got payroll to do first thing and that's what I was going to do is try to get the agenda together and get it on there. I mean, there's, I pretty much have it. I just got to put it all together. And I know there's other items that are sitting in the folder. I know, I think Liam might have a few things too.
Well, I know one of the, one of your ideas was to bring Myra back and I'm gonna put her on the spot right now. I, I.
She don't want to speak, John.
Well, she can nod her head yes or no, and I'll respond to it. I mean, are you willing to come back on a temporary basis? I know you retired. I know you've been traveling a lot. I've seen the beautiful pictures you've taken. So.
I, I, I'm sorry.
She's not willing to answer this question, right?
Okay, okay.
Is that what you said, Ms. Myra?
Okay.
I just think we're in a terrible spot. I can't speak to exactly why. I don't know, but I feel like we've been here before and I don't want to be here again. So if we, if we end up in this situation again, we won't be moving forward with the same staff that's here. I'll say that and I'll just leave it at that.
Are you speaking in regards to myself?
We've only got a few staff members here. I'm just saying.
If you're referring to what happened before, you do know none of that was my fault.
Okay. Let's not drag up the past, but I'm just saying if we're here again, because we don't even know why we're here and that's a problem that we don't even know why we're here. So if we're, if we do move forward, I'm not going to be here again. That's all. I'll just leave it at that.
I just think it would help if, if people wouldn't rally together to you all and, and tell you all.
It was way late by the time it was rallied to us. That was after.
I don't think it happened until way late.
No, that was after the resignations happened. So there was nobody rallied to me before the resignations happened. It was after. So I had no idea this was coming. So if that's what you were alluding to, I had no idea.
And I, you know, I didn't, I, I didn't know there was an issue until we had all the resignations and that's when I reached out to, to find out what the, what their reasons were.
Okay.
Lisa, do you know why they resigned exactly? I mean, specifically, do you know why they resigned? Do you think it was you or do you think it was Kim?
I think it was a combination. From what was said the other night.
I wasn't here. I missed it. So I'm.
You could watch it like everybody else.
I did watch it. It didn't, I thought you said you was in the rhythm when all that happened at the roundtable or whatever.
I was.
So then you knew everything that was being said?
I didn't know it was like that. I mean, I didn't know, I mean, I was trying to justify the things that he brought up at the workshop. I was basically saying, you know, this is what was said, this is what I meant by what was said. And I just wanted to make sure everybody knew where I was coming from. But again, like I said, when I say something in the future, I've learned that I have to be more direct.
Well, you have been very apologetic. And you've owned a lot of this and that's, I'm giving you kudos for that. But you're also putting all your eggs in the same basket.
What do you mean by that?
Like Kenny just said, there's not going to be another time.
I hope there's not.
Clean house and, and start over.
Yeah, I thought that's what you were doing tonight.
And see, I didn't. That's why I was wondering all these people in here, speaking on your.
Because that is how I left here feeling. I told them because that's how I felt when I left here. I feel that way a lot when I leave here.
And you should.
And you might not feel what I feel, but I feel it. I feel every time I say I have more work to do than I can do, that I am making an excuse. But yet I'm told, leave after forty hours. Well, what's going to happen if I leave after forty hours and we lose our state revenue because something didn't get done right? Or we lose our AvLorm tax because everything that's related to these dollars has a time on it, a timestamp.
How many conversations have me and you had about that? I told you, leave.
You tell me that. The minute I lose money, the minute I lose money for this town, then I.
It ain't about, you, you ain't losing money. It ain't.
No, but I will if I don't meet all the deadlines and there's a lot of.
Your family was worried about you. And I told them, you need to go home. Your health wasn't good. You needed to go home and you still won't do it.
And I told you all I needed help. And I finally got it after two and a half years. And now it's, we have exploded so much more that I still need help.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You finally got it after two and a half years?
Two and a half years of asking for the position that Elise just left. Two and a half years of me coming before this board saying, I mean, doing everything in my power to prove that I needed it by taking job descriptions and moving things around and coming up with what all that person would do and everything else. And now it's to the point where I had, thought I was on a good path and training one financially, one clerk duties in addition to the accounts payable. And now all the grants and stuff, that's another thing that I, and the fixed assets and the asset management now that we have to do and the capital, I mean, all of those things, I, I have everything in my office and it's like half done, half done. And there's so much that needs to be done with it, to be kept up with, that that's a full-time job. And that's part of the succession plan that, you know, and, and one of them can be the deputy clerk and they can learn in addition to if we take some stuff off of what was on that position before. But until you've worked in this office, it's hard to realize just how much work is here. And I, that's why when I say, I invite y'all in to come and sit, come shadow, come look at how much work we do and what all's got to be done. I mean, because it is, I mean, to be so small, we have a lot going on, a lot. I mean, look, look at the lady that came. I spent hours, days with her to come up with a fee schedule in order to be able to get us funding through the state revolving fund so that we can repair our sewer and get moving in that direction. But we're going to have to increase our rates tremendously in order to get there. I mean, and it's just because we haven't wanted to do it every year prior too. And I, I get it. I mean, nobody wants to be that person, especially an elected person. But at the end of the day, we are using our tax money that we're allotting for capital on asset management, which is maintenance. I mean, all that has, I mean, those are things that I don't have time to keep up with all them, but I know how they need to be done. And I'd be glad to train somebody, but I can't train somebody to do what I'm doing in addition to the other jobs that have to be done. I guess that's.
You're going to have to put a deputy clerk in your office where they used to be.
I love that. I mean, I, I know that nobody else liked it, but I loved it until I didn't. And I loved it because everything I did, I knew I was telling that person on a daily basis. Ever what, everything I had touched, and I felt like that any time that I were not to come back the next day, that they would be able to pick up and keep going because they knew everything that I was doing. And now that we've got all these grants, they did not get involved in the grant part of it because, and it's hard because I try to do a lot one day a week for grants, but grants, I mean, you get a call here, you get a call there, you get an email here, an email there. I mean, it's a little bit everywhere and you, you know, with the money that we're putting out right now with the hurricane shelter and the turnaround time of getting that money back, I mean, we're going to have to go out and borrow money just to be able to finish that building for interim lending because the state's not turning the money around fast enough. I mean, every time I get an invoice, I'm checking the week after, steady checking for that canceled check so that I can upload that payment in there to get reimbursed. And I mean, then calling, calling, emailing, because the state is very short-staffed themselves. And finally, today I got ahold of the lady and she's approved the request that I put in on July thirtieth and the ones I put in Friday.
So what is your plan for tomorrow?
Payroll.
Are you?
This agenda.
You're going to hire people?
I've got three applications that I would love to pick the phone up and call them all and get them in here and interview them as soon as possible.
Are you going to do that tomorrow? I mean, that's where we're at. We don't have staff.
I mean, I want to, but if one of them has to be a deputy clerk, then I need to advertise for that. Period. I mean.
Does a deputy clerk do away with the office manager?
That's what he just said that he wanted it to. He wants, and Jared, they want that person to do HR. And that's when I said, then they wouldn't be able to do, but then like, it.
Say it. You've got to take something off your plate.
The person that was doing the work that would be considered deputy clerk work minus the accounts payable, that was a full-time job. And I've got a full-time job and then some. And then I had another person that was doing all the financial and there was not enough time to add grants in there to that. So that's, that, I mean, I think my succession plan was good. I think that, you know, if we could go that route and talk about it Wednesday. But in the meantime, I planned on calling everybody Friday, but when John called and said this was going to be not a workshop, but a special meeting, which a special meeting means you can take action. So that was a clear indication right there that something could happen, very negative.
Or very positive, like you're going to hire some people.
I don't need a motion to hire people.
Did you call somebody today?
No, I needed to, I, I was fearful of a motion to terminate my position to the point that I even asked Christian, had you all asked him to bring a resolution to this meeting? And he can vouch for it. He said, nobody had called him and asked him that. That don't mean you wouldn't have been able to up until the last hour. I mean, that's how I felt when I left this meeting that night.
I'm sorry I missed it.
No, you had to work. I understand.
Christian, should we be looking at somebody to hire for HR services and take that away from the clerk? Maybe start like an HR position?
You mean like an outside vendor?
Or just bring somebody in, maybe hire an interior staff that handles all the HR? Does that put us in a better position?
It, it, it's a, I can't answer that from a legal perspective. That's an administrative thing. I mean, I will say that, you know, in Hilliard, your, your clerk's office is unique. It's, it's an older fashioned position. They actually do more than most clerks do nowadays. You know, for, for a lot of clerks, it's, it's public records, it's agendas, it's, um, so all this discussion about finance and grants and stuff, that's not, it is kind of a hybrid. It's not town manager because you all are in charge, but it's not a regular clerk position either. So when you ask me that, I don't know what the right answer is.
When you say that, most towns that do all the functions, they have a building and zoning department. And I know that that's the path we're going in and I'm very grateful to that, especially with what's coming in the pipeline of development that we know factually is coming. Um, but it also has a finance department and a human resources department and a lot even have a billing department. And so it is a lot more. I, I don't know no other clerks that do more than what Christian just mentioned.
Which is why I think that the thought of the town manager is coming into play because of that, because we're getting to that size of a town.
I agree. And I was looking at it as we're going to go into more departments also than just the one we're looking at doing right now. Because we are growing no matter what. We're going to double our census population over the next five years, period. All this rural undeveloped property is a high commodity right now. Is that, is there anything else that you all want? And is it all right if we further just get this at the workshop?
Are we going to get an agenda for the workshop?
You asked me that.
I, I did, I did. I'm sorry. I'm okay with foregoing it. I think you need to call and interview your people.
Thank you.
I mean, you can't have them hired before Thursday anyway, really.
No, I can't.
That's what I'm saying. So go ahead and interview them and see who they are. Get, put you one step up.
We couldn't make a motion all day long because it's a workshop.
But.
No, I.
No, no, no. I'm just saying there's, there's no reason for not to call these people.
In an emergency situation, just like what Public Works was under, we have done it numerous times in the past. I would not have no decision by Thursday probably anyway, but I could make offers and get people, the process started for those that needed to give notices and then backtrack to the sixteenth agenda.
Right. I mean, she'll have to do all the paperwork and drug testing and everything else. So it'll take time. There's no use, I mean, she needs people.
With, with the office staff that's left, I, I would appreciate if, if you and Kim would get together and figure out how we got from three months ago to where we're at today. If we're going to move forward with the staff we got, I want y'all to get together and soul search and figure out how we got here.
I think that that's.
I'm just saying, I, I think that's something you need to do together and figure out how we got here.
We, we, we have been doing some soul searching.
And if you need one of us, because we all can't do it unless we call a workshop or a meeting, we can't all be together and discuss anything, but if you need one of us.
I could put you at a different desk if you're offering to help.
A different, who, who at a different desk?
Teach you financials.
I just thought that's where you were going.
No, to help with, uh, with the conversations.
Not an answer.
No, no. If I could, I would. But I have my own office to take care of.
Work like.
Is there anything else?
Yes, sir.
Jimmy? Jared? Joe? Lee? Counselor?
No.
All right, um. All right, um. Dallas, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Jared? Joe, Lee? Well, if any to.
You meant the discussion.
The discussion for what we're here for. But now it's the end of the meeting. Do you have anything to?
You didn't ask the public.
This is true. I did not. Yeah. Is there any public input? If you do, uh, come up, name, address, three minutes. You're running in. You turned it off.
I'm Jack Bailey, 37661 Kings Ferry Road, right here in Hilliard. I just wanted to say I was very disappointed with the meeting Thursday night. What should have been just a, a vote to accept or not a resignation turned into a gripe session from a disgruntled employee that was allowed to berate our clerk and personally attack and professionally attack her character. Uh, I think if it would have been any one of you guys up here that that person was talking about, that it would not have been allowed to proceed. It's just my opinion. And to allow that person to come up here and just go on and on and on with backbiting and gossip and hearsay was unconscionable. Did she bring up some good points that needed investigating? Probably so, but I don't believe this was the venue for that. It should have been done in a workshop or in a meeting like this. But to allow them to go on and on and on, and then at the end, three minutes to come back and cross-examine like a prosecutor, answer my question, was one of her responses to our town clerk. I think that was disrespectful, not only on the employee's part or the former employee's part, but on the council for allowing that to continue and to go on and not stop it. Thank you.
Alex Purvis again, 271 Purvis Lane. I just don't want anything to be misconstrued by what you said about her family. We respect what she does. We respect it. Built work ethic. I, I know you didn't. I know you didn't. I just don't want you to think that we're at home wanting her to come home in the sense that like we are that way. We respect what she does. She has built work ethic and the both of us. You can't top her work ethic. So I just want to reiterate that we respect what she does and we're not at home griping in the sense that she needs to come home. We're gripping in the sense that she needs respect. And I don't mean this rudely, but interrupting her while she's talking is rude. It is unprofessional talking over her. I, I'm very sorry to say that, but that is why she feels the way she feels. That is why she feels the way she feels, that she doesn't have a voice up there is because she's interrupted. And she's interrupted in a tone that is hostile. That's why she feels the way she does. She's a woman. You're not women. None of you are. That's why we're here tonight because women felt like they were being not treated fairly. Women are sensitive. And I just want to reiterate, that's why she feels the way she feels because she's interrupted when she's speaking and cut off with a tone that is not making her feel safe to speak. She won't speak up for herself. She won't. She never does. I've watched so many of these meetings online and on YouTube and watched her just sit there and take it the majority of the time. And it makes me furious because I want her to have a voice and I want her to be treated with respect. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
All right. Any, anyone else? Seen none? Well, I've already asked y'all twice if y'all have anything to say. Um, I don't have anything. I know we've got a workshop, um, Thursday night. Then our next regular meeting is on the 16th. So that's all I've got. Um, Corey, you have nothing? Gabe, you have nothing? Ms. Purvis?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
No.